And I guess that's my comment, and into the future, we should be able to do it one day. The only comment I personally have is I did some spreadsheets about what my questions were. The last three years, or two years in particular, I went backwards and gave you a bunch of numbers, and so if you care where I got my numbers, they're on the spreadsheet rather than me paging through the books. I thought that was a better way of doing it. Jim, your forum?
Mr. Mayor, and if we can cut it down, and again, this year, if we can go through the departments much quicker than the five days, department directors are just within a very short phone call from me to them, and they will be here, so whatever timeframe that the council wants to work under, we can do that. And if we need to modify this schedule, we obviously can do it. What I'd like to do is just sort of hit the highlight of the memorandum that went out as a cover to the budget, to make sure that the general public understands where we are and sort of how we got here. The council had asked that I present a budget that would be reflective of the administration, and at the same time, the administration hopefully is reflecting what we take from the sense of the five council members, as well as the general public. And this reflects the interaction of the department directors, as well as myself, with the community, and trying to get our priorities set. One of the things that we did is that we took a position that our millage rate was not going to change, especially since we saw an assessed valuation increase of about 4.14%. And so that allowed us to gain some revenues through the general fund millage and avalourum taxes. Staffing and salaries were still an issue, and tried to make sure that we could address and streamline where we could. We did have a reduction of seven positions throughout the organization, and I think, again, that's reflective of the productivity that we are seeing in the organization and trying to meet the goals and objectives of the council of controlling the cost of operation as well as the increase of productivity per man-hour that we can get within the organization. Another thing that we did is we rolled the recreation fund into the general fund. It had been treated as an enterprise fund, and from the GFOA and all general accounting standards, when you have less than 1/30 of your revenues reflective of what your expenditures are, that is not an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund's got to come within, you know, a reasonable expectations of generating the revenues of operation of that fund, so we've rolled that in. This year, we have identified revenues and expenditures, sort of highlighted those in the budget so the council can see. Cindy did a spreadsheet that gives you a comparison of last year, so you could sort of get a picture of where we are. But it's still a major cost factor to the general fund, because we transfer any makeup monies that are necessary in order to carry that operation. Health insurance costs, we did have an increase in health insurance, and we went with the fully funded plan again, and as the council knows, that the United Healthcare is our provider. And under that, we had about a 10% across-the-board increase, but due to the reduction of the number of employees, as well as attrition of employees and changes, and employee moving down to the basic plan, the reflective impact on our organization was only about 2.5%. So we really did benefit from some of the moves that we have made, not only in the control and the increase in productivity, but also in the controlling of cost in other areas. We also are projecting our budget on the fact that we will negotiate in good faith with the Teamsters Union to try to control the cost of the healthcare that we've already imposed in certain areas on, for example, department directors. The pension costs did have an impact. We did the actuarial study, and we had to adjust our contribution to the pension plan in an upward number of about $300,000, because under state law, our salary projections over the last five years, I believe it is, the last 10 years, did not keep up with what was being projected in our actuarial, which, as you know, that the employees contribute 3%, so those salary increases reflect the contributions from the employees to the pension plan. But that actually became a positive number to us that we have to contribute. The other thing we did in the pension plan, pension costs, we were also projecting and negotiating in good faith with the Teamsters Union, that we will go from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. Initially, as we have discussed several times, we're going to have an increase in cost to the city, but we're going to defray the cost and the risk that are in the future of having a defined benefit plan by having a defined contribution plan and can control those costs in the outer years, which I think was a goal of the city council and one that was given to myself to try to achieve. The electric utility, we are showing a surplus or a balance forward of about $338,000. We think and feel very comfortable with where we're going in the electric utility. We also are looking at ways of reducing our costs there. Our utility director, Tom Richards, has been in communication with OUC and also with FPNL, talking about the transmission issue and the taking down of the, not taking down, excuse me, the mothballing of our power generation facilities. We understand that those are major cost factors, and so we are projecting that we will continue that effort over the next fiscal year. It will not come to a conclusion there, maybe the bits and parts of that will take place, but we are working in that direction. We did have a reduction of number of employees in the electric utility. Again, part of our cost savings. Water and sewer, we do show that we're going to have a very good balance forward in our water and sewer of about 1.2 million, which makes it a very strong utility. We also are going to have a total of four, full-time positions to be eliminated in that area, and so we are continuing to see what we can do to control our costs. At the same time, we are reflecting that outside the city and in corporate areas, we'll be imposing the county rates imposed on those customers. The other thing we're doing, and on the full-time employees, two positions that we are looking at that we have increased in employees. One is that we're taking our part-time, recommending that we take a part-time employee in our city clerk's office, which is the person who does all of the recording of our meetings and those type of things, moving that part-time to a full-time position. The dollar amount is about $10,000, so it's really very reasonable. Plus, that position will be charged out to various utilities and the enterprise funds because of the type of operation. Another is a position going to the warehouse. In our reduction of numbers of employees, we had to reduce positions, and we did reduce positions in the warehouse. What we found is that we have a lot of times, people from the electric department standing in line to get their materials in the morning. So we're holding up the proverbial, we're, you know, taking a dollar to pay for a dime or something, in the fact that we have three or four linemen waiting on their trucks and their crews in order to get their materials loaded onto their trucks in the morning. We're adding an employee back to the purchasing department, but it'll be paid through the electric enterprise fund. The person will still work for John O'Brien in that department, will be capable of doing other functions, but the primary and the total charge will go to the electric fund, because that is going to be their primary effort in order to make sure we get that equipment out and those trucks loaded in the morning.
In the electric fund, you said there's five full-time positions to be eliminated. Does that include the warehouse person?
No, it does not.
The warehouse person is in the general.
In the general fund. So it'll come out of there, but their payment to the general fund will be reflected in their purchasing department. The five-year capital plan, hopefully, when you all look through your five-year capital project plan book, you saw that we tried to really change the format, make it a little more, give more clarity as to what the projects were, what the balances that we would have going forward, as well as where the expenditures and where the revenues would come from in order to pay for those capital projects. And then we tried to give a redefinition of the capital projects, so you could really see where it was going, and in some cases, we even actually included pictures of those. Again, in summary, it's really a budget that reflects from the administrations what we have taken from discussions with council members, as well as the general public, and tried to keep a status quo. We do realize that one of the areas that has been a point of discussion were the increase in the number of man-hours on the beaches for lifeguards. We did not include any increases in that. We kept our status level and our staffing level equal in that particular location, and we did not include increasing the number of lifeguards in any one of those areas. Just for informational purposes, every hour that you increase a lifeguard on the beach is approximately $10,000 to $11,000 per year. So if you increase one hour, what you do is you increase the staffing level on whatever beach that is by two people, which comes out to a little over $27 an hour, and that projected over a year is between $10,000 and $11,000. So as we get into those discussions, you can sort of keep those numbers in mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. This is a workshop, by the way. I don't think we need to...
No, I still think we'd be recognized, so that...
No, I think you can go forth very informally in this.
Thank you very much. As we embark on our budget review, just had a few general comments and hopefully setting the tone for our week. First, I want to commend Jim O'Connor and Cindy and all your staff, or at least for presenting a budget that maintains our millage rate for the request to council. And for the public, I think they need to understand that the size of the budget, it's not just $20 million general fund that we're dealing with here today. We have $100 million electric fund, we have a $16 million water and sewer fund. Total, we're looking around $136 million of our taxpayer money that we are managing and allocating today. Calvin Coolidge says, "There's nothing easier than spending public money. It does not appear to belong to anyone. The temptation is overwhelming to bestow it on somebody." So I'm hoping we will keep that in mind, that these money that we're dealing with is out of our taxpayers' pockets. The city's looking at still incredible liabilities to the future. We have unfunded pension liability, underfunded pension liability of $37 million. Our pension's only 62% funded. We have other post-employment benefit liability of $14 million. We have an all-re requirements penalty for exiting the all-re requirements project of $42.5 million. We have FEMA, we have still Teamsters negotiations to allow us to continue to lower our healthcare and our pension projects. What I would like to see us look at is our reserve position. Where are we for that northeaster that's going to require a doom restoration? Heaven forbid, a hurricane, to make sure that we're setting up sufficient reserves, that we have funds to continue to protect our lagoon, to be looking at moving the waste treatment plant off the river, to eliminate septic tanks to protect our lagoon, to expand our lifeguard programs. These are the kinds of things that we want to be having money set aside, prioritizing projects for the future. So with that in mind, we still need to live within our means. We've seen a small increase in our revenue, tax revenue of 4%, but we're still recovering, you know, and we need to prioritize things and still addressing those reserve liability areas. That's my comments.
You know, one thing that I think this group of city council, and even reaching back to the prior one or two, and particularly to Jim and Cindy, I think we've done a good job of addressing some of the ills of the past. And maybe I'll be informal today, since we're an informal pillar. I think you're right. I mean, you know, what are we going to do about this system forward? I think as we get to water and sewer, we've got to talk about that. You know, what is our program? One other asterisk or footnote I have, besides finding a way to do this faster in future years, is that I also believe that as we do a capital plan for five years, we should be thinking about doing a preliminary budget for more than one year at a time. I mean, after all, it's a continuum of years, and I think you got a plan for a longer period than just one year of cash flow. That's just my own opinion.
Well, I agree with you. Unfortunately, when you're having an election every year or so, that makes it quite difficult.
I know, I know, I know.
You know, and until you want to consider having council members have a term longer, then yeah, one, you know, two-year terms, it's...
But we can do what Mr. Gorey did in his Gorey Plan, which, you know, how we were going to deal with the pension, which we now apparently can't do. We can do provisional spreadsheets out farther and think a little farther out than just one year. Anyway, that's my comment. We may, we don't have to necessarily completely agree, and I don't think we're going to get there this year anyway, Pilar.
No, but the lack of strategic planning, I agree, has always been, yeah, a weakness with this system.
But if you look at it, I mean, management by objective and in some of the directions as far as benefits and some of the things that we've done, I mean, I think we've taken a number of steps in the right direction. Unfortunately, I agree with you, a lot of the steps are yet ahead of us, they have to be done, and it is what it is. Jim, do you want to move forward now?
Yes, we do. We'll take the first department, which is city council. And I guess the appropriate thing, are there any questions from the council?
By the way, if this spreadsheet, you don't have to use it, but I will be using it. It's probably in the back of the package you got, rather than the front. It's on the front of mine, but it's just a spreadsheet, and it's what my questions will be, if I have questions. I have no questions on the city council.
Any questions from any of the council members?
No.
We've gone to city clerk. And the city clerk, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I do, on major goals and challenges. There's an item that says, "Citywide document imaging process in place." What is that? explanation?
At one time, we were going to have all of our records put on the computer so the public can access them. It's very expensive. They, probably the cost of that is between $30,000 and $40,000, so that is one of my goals for one of these days. We are looking at, actually, the library is helping us, they have an imaging system now, they're putting all of our minutes on there, they've started from day one of our minutes, so we've gotten, from the first set of the minutes, one book done, and they're going to help us with that and not charge us anything. So that is one of my goals, to get all that done eventually, because that's a question that we have a lot. People like to go back to the old minutes and research them.
And I guess I also have a problem with personnel in the city clerk's office. When we did a benchmarking study, the average with the city clerk's office was two and a half, and I thought three people in the city clerk's office was fine. Last year, we did discuss decreasing that back to three from the current four, and this year, now we're looking at expanding it to five. I mean, I think we still have a real disconnect here, and maybe the personnel that we have within the city clerk's office are not, do not have the skill set that we require. And I think that's still a failure of management, not to train that, train those individuals to provide the services necessary. But, you know, I mean, the city of St. Lucie has two people in their city clerk's office, and it's the ninth-largest city in Florida. How come in Vero Beach, you know?
I think it's the roles that we play here in the city clerk, and obviously Tammy, the city clerk, can address those. One of the issues that we have is that we're getting more and more expansion of committees and organizations meeting. Example, the Railroad Commission. I mean, it's obviously a very vital thing, but it requires TV-ing of that, someone sitting in and taking the minutes of that. Plus, we have opened up all of our negotiations for public, you know, and we have to take minutes of all those, record those. I think we go a little bit beyond what many, many cities do, because we have this transparency thing here in the city of Vero Beach, trying to be as transparent as possible. I mean, you go to our website for a city of 15,000, and just the access of the information is just phenomenal compared to many of the cities. So you're right in the benchmarking, but I think you need to go a little deeper than that and see what roles that are being played and what functions are carried out by those respective departments. And based on what we've been able to find from the Florida League of Cities, and what we impose on the city clerk to provide is the real challenge. Can they be diversified in their working thing and using technology, running the cameras as an example? I'm not sure the city clerk could have somebody sitting up here taking minutes at the same time, running the cameras, using that just as one of these examples, but Tammy, you're...
And you're right, Jim. The position that we're asking for is, I've got some statistics on how much the government coordinator has been spending on the web time, the website, as well as broadcasting. He actually broadcasts 12 of the 15 commission and board meetings that we have. He's allocated probably about 20 hours a month doing the broadcasting and 20 hours a month doing the webcasting. I'll pass these out to each one of you, and there, whenever you have time to look at them. There's also some statistics on how many people are actually tuning in and watching the livestream broadcasting of our council meetings, how many people we're getting on Facebook, website. It's kind of interesting, and also breaks it down to how many females, males, the age group are tuning in to find out this information.
Statistics was...
Yeah. But this position, I truly believe, is not a position that I'm asking for. This is something that we do for the community, we do for council, we do citywide. It just happens to be in my budget. I know last year, we looked at even putting that in the IT department, and I think wherever it would be, it's got to be a full-time position. Right now, our government coordinator is working 34 hours a week, and that's about as much as I can give him part-time, and the work is just not getting done like we need it to.
Also, to address...
I think this is really important. He takes care of everything from our little computers.
And, yeah, that is, that is true, too. He can fix our equipment when it breaks.
And going to the IT department, it really does not have a role there, because he really is a part of what the city clerk provides. IT is taking care of the computers sitting on everybody's desk, but not television cameras.
Well, I'm for moving forward as it is in the budget personally, which I've already said, so...
Any other questions?
That's good.
City managers, budget?
I have no questions.
None me, either.
Any questions for council?
No.
Maybe home, city hall?
Yeah, if you look at my spreadsheet, just this word of explanation, one way that I've always done this for the many years I've done it, is I always look at history, and I look at history year-to-date, and of course, you know, what I do is straight lining, and straight lining doesn't take into account the seasonality and a whole bunch of other things. There are two here, and neither one of them really concerned me, to tell you the truth, but janitorials budgeted at 24. In 12 and 13, it was 17. In May, year-to-date, it's 12. Straight line would be 18, so you have $6,000 more for what it's worth. Again, that doesn't concern me, it's nickels and dimes. And the utilities, if you look back into history, was 69 million, and it's rolling forward at 69 million. So we have a little bit of fluff here, which might be a good thing to have, I don't know. I just pointed out, that's all. I am not objecting.
Yeah, I have, I had noticed that we're doing $6,000 a year air conditioning. Is it time to replace the air conditioner units? And if you're $6,000 a year maintenance?
Well, replacing them, and I would have to call O'Malley, hopefully, within hollering distance.
Oh, we can go with facilities, yeah, facilities, we can...
But replacing an air conditioning system in this building could be very, very expensive upfront capital cost. Now, again, over time, you may be able to save something, obviously, there's more efficiency. But I would leave that for O'Malley to address that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, and see if it's in the five-year capital plan at all. It may be, maybe somewhere in there.
When you get to that kind of a number, each year, reoccurring, reoccurring costs, you need to at least look at whether you're going to replace the thing or not.
I think there's a bunch of little ones on top of parts of the roof here, too, though, for what it's worth.
Oh, yes.
And there are things, can we look at a saving program possibly for city hall? I mean, we're spending $80,000 a year on utilities.
Yeah, we could.
I think that certainly may be something that would pay out, you know, whether it's, you know, lightbulb changes or some way to improve our energy efficiency.
But we have empty offices with the windows wide, like nothing covering them, just sitting there, heat's coming in, it's taking more for the building to cool, even some blackout curtains in empty offices.
We do have quite a bit of empty space that obviously being heated and air conditioned. The layout of the building is not very good, as everybody knows, and, I mean, that goes for even the telephone system and everything else. And so we can take a look at the energy. Obviously, there are companies that do those, and so we can check and see what we can do and use this...
Yeah, but I think for minimal expense, that we might be able to get, yeah, some significant savings there. Let's try.
Anything else on general fund? We'll come back to the facilities maintenance. City Attorney's Department?
Wayne, I see you're going on office and furniture, you're going to $3,900, $4,000 from $100. What are you, what are you planning on buying?
Yeah, no, that actually should have been changed. We had put computers in there, we reduced it to one computer, which is now shown on the capital request. The only other issue, and I had talked to Javier about this, we've got a couple of those UPS units that seem to be giving us trouble. We may end up having to replace them, so we could probably reduce that 39 down to like $500.
And I'd like to look at major goals and challenges, and I'd like to add the request that the city attorney's office be more proactive in advising us about upcoming legislative changes. I hate that we got caught with our, excuse the expression, pants down with this vacation rental thing, and that if, you know, we have somebody or are looking at legislation, you know, upcoming legislation and saying, "Hey, okay, council, you know, you may need to strengthen up, the ordinance we have is weak in that area, there's going to be changes, we're not going to be able to go back at it," you know?
Well, here's the only problem, is the person we used to have that was familiar with the legislative process and kept us up to date was Carol Jarrow, who left in January. She hasn't been replaced and isn't budgeted to replace her. Peggy and I are working full speed constantly. Catherine has taken over the duties of what, some of what she used to do, but a lot of her services are gone now, having to do with the litigation, and she's doing the administrative things that Carol used to do. We don't have anybody to dedicate to that. About all we can do is do what everyone else does, is look at the reports as they come out from the legislature and from the League of Cities.
And that's all I'm asking for, and saying, "Hey, when you see those, you see any flags, bring that information to council." No, I'm not looking for hiring somebody full-time to do this, I'm just asking that you add that to your goals.
Carol is very special in that field.
Any other questions on city?
Yeah, Wayne, one thing, and we had talked about this briefly in the past, I'd like us to try and look at taking advantage of some of the law school programs that place a, you know, graduated bar-certified attorney for six months in municipal offices, just to help with that workload. It just benefits everybody.
And we are signed up for the Miami for exactly that program. The problem is, Vero Beach is so remote from law schools that you, we have, the only, we've had two interns in the last couple of years, and that's only because they happen to live here.
Yeah, housing for...
Yeah, so, because we obviously don't have a budget to pay for any stipend or housing or anything, or expenses, so it's strictly on their dime or on the school's dime, but we are signed up with that University of Miami Law School program.
Excellent, thank you.
You know, but in this great community, too, we may have people that'd be willing to house an intern for six months.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, something to maybe reach out to the community for.
Any other questions?
Nope. Well done, Wayne.
Human Resources?
I have one on operating salaries. If you, and this is, I'm sorry, not on operating salaries, on professional services. I beg your pardon. We have a budget of $57,000. We spent $40,000, and we're straight lining for 24. So my question is, what is, what are we, what are we budgeting $57 for? What does it pay for?
Can we take an opportunity to introduce our new Human Resources Director, please?
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Manis.
Gabrielle, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, hello.
Thank you, pleasure.
That 57 includes a large component of the expenses for Jason Odom to negotiate union contracts.
That's the kind of question that's valuable, because otherwise, you can't, you can't see it.
A portion of that is allocated out to the other funds, based on the number of Teamsters they have, but all of the costs for the PBA negotiations stay in Human Resources, so that's the reason that number's...
And those are due up again next year, for both the rank and file and the lieutenants.
Also, just for informational purposes, as you know, we've gone to MPAS last year with the Teamsters. We're at MPAS today with the Teamsters. Typically, if they don't vote on a contract, that'll last one year, so we'll be back in negotiating again next year on a similar issue. So that being said, it's almost a continuing cost, based on our recent track record.
That also covers, if any, I mean, although our grievances have gone down significantly, if one of them goes to arbitration, it would cover those costs, too.
A couple of questions. Carol, welcome. It's so glad, great to have you here at Vero Beach and here with the city. Under major goals and challenges, you have monitor the performance appraisal system for compliance of all departments. How are we doing with that? Since this is something fairly new that we... Since this is something fairly new that we instigated within the last few years with this council?
Everybody is keeping pretty much on track with doing them. Lynn George, when she was here, put a system in where we would upload them all to everybody's website, you know, the general O-drive, so that if one of the department heads or managers needed one, they could go in and access it. And then, basically, I send out like a nasty gram if they have not kept up with it and said, okay, you know, it's been a month since, you know, has passed, since you know, well, Cindy knows.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you know, they all, they all get them. The timing of these reviews is being done on the employee's anniversary date?
They're done in several different ways. There's an annual performance review for all of the people who have been here a year or more. Then we have what's called...
And that's done on their anniversary, or is it done at citywide on a certain time?
It would be done on their anniversary, okay. And then we do a trial period performance review, which is done at three months and five months for newly hired employees. The same is done for someone who has been promoted into another position. They would get a performance review on this month three and month five.
Great, thank you.
Also, we are in the process, one of the, part of this learning curve, changing or modifying our performance evaluation forms and trying to bring it a little more clear to both the employee and the department directors who are doing those. Gabrielle's heading up that charge as well. I think we're going to take it to Labor Management.
This week, yes.
This week. And so we'll be working with Labor Management in order to facilitate that change.
Well, I thank you and I commend you on the efforts. I realize asking employees to be accountable for performance and having reviews is a real culture change for the city. And it will take a while to get everyone on board.
In all honesty, I think all the managers have been doing a really good job on getting them done and on performing them in a meaningful fashion for the employees.
I asked another question, major goals and challenges. You have update the city's personnel rules. You're seeing any, any major problems, voids, any issues particularly you want to address?
I would be perfectly frank with you on that. I know when Lynn retired, she indicated to me that that was something that we needed to work on. But as I've only been here a couple of months, I have not really had a chance to address that. I know Lynn said that's important, so I will be addressing that. But that, in all honesty, was my learning curve and everything.
And those will be impacted by the conclusion of the negotiations as well, is my understanding. So that would be part of it.
True. But having read those rules, I agree with her that there are some things that are certainly adequate that need to be updated and...
Lynn and the Personnel Committee have done a significant amount of work. And, you know, I have every intention this year of getting back in there and getting them put to the forefront.
Thank you. I know it's a lot to throw at you right now as a new employee, but thank you very much, Gabrielle.
Jim, would you get a resume for her to us, so that we could see her background?
Absolutely.
It's quite impressive, so.
I haven't seen it. I'd like to read it.
Sure will. Just to give you a little insight, she was a practicing attorney in Ohio, and labor was her mainstream. And then she became a mom and sort of moved down to Palm Beach County. She has a story about that that I may repeat that you told me. But she was working for a consulting firm for the last four years and was actually president of that consulting firm who handled human resources. And when they were up in Ohio, and they used to vacation down in Palm Beach County, and so they, in their vacation, they said, man, this is a great place to live. Fortunately, her husband can do remote work. And so they moved to Palm Beach County. Well, she learned, like a lot of other people learn, that it's great for vacation in Palm Beach County. It's pretty challenging to raise two boys there, who happen to be very, very good in lacrosse. So on her radar screen came Vero Beach. And so when the opportunity prevailed itself, and I found that we were going to hook her in, at least at the high school, and the lacrosse traveling teams here, because of our good teams that are in the Indian River County, she became available to us. And Gabrielle's been doing an extremely good job for us since she's been here for a few months.
Well, thanks, Jim.
But we'll get that resume out and...
And great to introduce, thank you for the words, at least it introduces Gabrielle a bit to the public, because I think we're very lucky to have her.
Any other questions on human resources?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Finance. Cindy, you're up.
Not, not a lot of changes here. We did, dues to some degree are printing and binding, and our advertising, the printing and binding being a direct result of going to quarterly, monthly financial reports instead of month, I mean, quarterly instead of monthly, and doing a lot more of our reporting to the various committees and commissions and to the council electronically, and not producing quite so many copies of the big fat colored books and reports, so.
And along that line, I'm not sure I need a monthly copy of the ledger. I know occasionally, I utilize that as a document, but I'm not sure I need it monthly. And if maybe there were a couple of copies available, the city clerk's office would be sufficient, so that if I needed it, I could go get it. But I didn't think we needed, unless all the other council members want their own copy, I mean...
I need a copy, and I use it every month.
I will leave that one to Tammy. What I had explained to me is if I gave a copy to one council member, I needed to give it to all of them. So I will leave it to Tammy to tell me how to handle that, because I'd love to make fewer of them.
Yeah, I realize that. But, and if the mayor enjoys it, which is fine, but I mean, you know, if we have two copies that are available from the city clerk's office, and then you can just check it out, you know, if you want to use it, fine, and yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem. If there are some council that are not utilizing it every month, there's no use in making those books.
That's what I'm...
You know, so just let me know how much, how many you think that you need.
And we make them available electronically to the department heads. They are in a slightly different format. So certainly, for those of you that don't want a hard copy, we can make the electronic version available if you want to go and look at it, so.
Well, I'd like electronic copy. The only thing I wondered is, does it take a lot of time out of your staff to generate those things on a monthly basis? Or is it just something you just print a report on?
Hard copies, yes. The electronic copy, no, because we stopped providing hard copies to all the department heads, but we still want them to be able to see it. So we provide the electronic copy, as a matter of course, for all the department heads. But we don't make many hard copies anymore.
I'd be happy with the electronic.
Okay. That's one, two, three, great.
I think one hard copy, four...
And then, as usual, we'll put one hard copy in the clerk's office that you can look at.
Yeah, if we can have two, and then I always have one of them, so look at that.
Occasionally, yeah, I mean, there are times I need to get, that I like to see the hard copy, but not every month.
The other thing I wanted to say about the finance department is, this is an area that we've talked with the Finance Commission, the Utility Commission about moving forward. We are working on implementing some changes in our electronic banking services and with some consequences on our cashiering department. But right now, we're working through the particulars of that. And so, right now, what you see is a budget that's the status quo. And if, over the course of the summer and into the fall, we're able to implement some of those things, we would come back to you and let you know what impact it would have on the budget. It would impact our part-time salaries, but it would also impact our banking fees and, at first, probably be about a wash. But it would certainly improve efficiency and revenue collection, so.
Yeah, thank you. No further questions?
Any other questions on that? Okay, we move on to finance, information, technology.
Jim, would you pass this to Cindy? And you have a copy, but...
I do have a copy.
But it's where I am. There's one here that interests me, which is operating...
The salaries.
Operating salaries. And I guess I question why they have gone down. You're rolling forward at 357, you spent 347. And it, so the question is, why, why the $50,000 reduction from the running rate?
Easy answer. The current year, and last year, too, but in the current year, we've lost a couple of very long-term employees. And so the actuals on salaries include the sick and vacation payouts for those very long-term employees. As we've lost those long-term employees, we've had the fortune to replace some of those key positions with people who were within the city but are at an entry level. So essentially, what we've had here is the exodus of some long-term employees and replacements with people at lower salary levels. And those people have been extremely good, and it's working out for us, so.
Thank you. Paul's available, if you have any questions. Information technology?
Actually, I do, but there are, oh, I notice on a lot of these, well, I'd have to go through each one of my green tabs here, but I notice that it seems like an awful lot of money, reoccurring costs for software updates. Are we working with a lot of old computers or something? Let me go through here, and I'll see if I can find one.
Yes, doing that, a quick question, Paul. The age of our existing disaster recovery software?
The disaster recovery software, we've been using probably about eight, seven years.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And in that world, that's just...
Right, and that's why I have the disaster recovery in there.
No, I think it's vitally important. I mean, heaven forbid that we would have a problem and not be able to recover our records. But I knew it was an old system, and I just wanted the public to, thank you.
On page 119, under water and sewer expenditures, you've got a 27%, 28% increase in software maintenance. What in the world is...
Now, some of those, those are done by the departments for possibly software that's, that they have.
So you guys don't have any connection with that?
Right.
That's totally internally?
Exactly, like maybe SCADA control software or something like that, or inventory tracking for, for water and sewer.
Rob Bolton, we actually discussed that in the city manager's reviews, and Rob Bolton can address that one when we talk about water and sewer. I believe you're right. I think it is SCADA software updates.
But we are working with some older technology right now that we are phasing out. And you might want to talk about the type of software and...
Yeah, some of the things I'm looking at in the future that we've got is, you know, Office, we're currently on Office 2007. So, you know, in a few years, that's going to be desupported. And so we have to start looking forward to that. So I put some of those numbers in the five-year plan, so that we can look forward on that, so that you guys aren't surprised with a number, hey, next year, we have to spend a big chunk of money to get it upgraded. So, so we have that. We have our core switches, which, those will be coming up in 2018. Those are the backbone of the network. Every bit of traffic, voice for phones, data, email, everything goes over those. So we want to make sure that we have equipment that is supported by the vendors and that we can get parts for, and doesn't result in downtime.
Do you, when you get the, so you're going to get a new software package. Do you also contract for a maintenance package that comes along with that?
For the Office software, we did, several years ago, that Microsoft started offering software assurance. And because we typically keep software for so long, when you add in the numbers, you actually end up paying for it almost twice over the lifespan that we typically keep a software. So we opt not to get the software maintenance for, like, say, Office. We just go ahead and then upgrade everybody, you know, seven years, eight years down the road, as opposed to paying that software assurance every single year that you own the software to stay on the most current version.
Okay, good move, yeah.
I was going to say, I think you've done an incredible job. And I know we have a lot of antiquated equipment and software programs within, within the city to maintain and to keep going. Curious on the consolidate the storage resulting in more efficient use of available storage. Can you give us a little bit about what we're currently doing and what we might be able to...
Last year, we implemented a SAN, which is a central storage device. It's capable of 14 terabytes of data. It's allowed us to consolidate all of our physical servers before. We had servers all over the city for different things, and it was actually a support nightmare. Now, we've been able to convert those into a virtual environment. It's kind of like those commercials you've seen on TV where they have the big giant room with all these servers, and then now there's a box in the room, and it, so we're doing that. So it reduces electric costs, cooling costs. It makes my job easier, because it's much more efficient to do those upgrades. Their reboot times are much better. And we've actually noticed that Microsoft Windows runs better under the virtual environment. So it's much, much more stable than, than what we've had before.
Thank you very much. And keep looking for those things. That's great.
I would just want to say, too, that, you know, Paul and Robert are one of the departments where there have been a fair number of staffing decreases in the last few years. And they have done an excellent, excellent job of both leveraging technology, as you were just discussing, and also really looking at their operation and dialing what they did back to the things that are most critical to the city, protecting the city's data, you know, keeping the city's data safe and things like that, to the point where they've managed to achieve a lot with the few number of people they have remaining. And it's, it's been an excellent exercise in efficiency.
Do we still have a lot of people on Windows XP, or have you phased those out?
We're phasing those out as the machines are replaced. We have virus protection at our internet gateway that's updated hourly. We also have antivirus on the machines that's updated, again, hourly, as well as on email and on our spam firewall. So we have several level, levels there. So internally, I think we're all right for right now. But it is something that I, you know, I made departments aware of it over a year ago, that they need to start looking at. Any machines that are regulated that may have to do with NERC or FDLE or something like that, we have told them that if their security is a concern, you need to go ahead and replace those machines. And they've been doing that.
Good move.
The other thing Paul and Robert have done is made sure that all of our licenses are up to date. As you know, some organizations have been called with licenses and what, what happens in the organization, people just start copying off their buddy's computer. And there are hefty fines for that. They have gone through and made sure all the departments are in compliance, even though there were some moans and groans from respective departments, because they had to start paying more in order to get those licensed. The other thing it did, if they were not being used at some station, let's get rid of them and not pay for those license. But that is helping us keep out of hot water from that perspective as well.
That can get expensive.
Yes.
They find you, they can really jump on you.
And they're picky. I mean, some of it was a machine that somebody, you know, we call it dominoing, where someone gets a new machine, they take the old machine, which, and move it down to another person that maybe has a less complicated task. That software wouldn't have been removed off of it. And it was software that, you know, we didn't actually maintain or install. It was originally handled by the departments. We've taken that over from them on that particular software.
When I was at McDonnell Douglas, we had a very advanced CAD system. And we had a license for like 22 seats. And somebody pirated about three more seats. And when they found out about it, they sued us for a portion of the contract. What you're, and we're talking about a, you know, a small thing, like a couple of trillion dollars. So that can get really, really serious.
Paul had along an interesting summer with the AutoCAD people, so.
Yes. The only other thing I just want to remind council on is the telephone system that we have in the, in the five-year plan. It was installed in 1997. It serves seven city facilities. And we do have a maintenance provider that is currently supporting it.
Still supporting?
Still supporting it. They can still acquire parts for it, and they've been very responsive. And last year, they actually had a reduction in their maintenance costs. So it's, I've been very pleased with the service.
Little note on the side of it says, return to Smithsonian.
But it is still meeting our needs, so, you know.
As long as it works.
Exactly.
As long as you get it supported.
So, but at some point, we are going to need to address it. So, just wanted to make...
One of those projects that's been in the five-year plan for 10 years. We just keep kicking it down the road a little bit. So we keep, we keep it in there to keep it on everyone's radar.
And I, and if anyone has questions about, you know, what research have I done as far, I haven't, until I get the feeling that we want to go ahead and pursue that for, for next year or something, that's when I'll start.
Oh, you're right, because it'll change anyway.
Exactly. And with staff levels, it's, it's just very difficult to, you know, focus on something like that and take care of everything else. So I'm just trying to prioritize the, the needs.
Looks good, senor.
Any other questions? Thank you, Paul. Purchasing. You know, this was the one where we did the modification and added...
Actually, warehouse. Actually warehouse. Purchasing is pretty static.
Morning, John.
Morning. Morning, Mayor, Council. I'm prepared to answer any questions you have regarding our purchasing division.
I'm ready to start. You know, we go through these budget books and we have major goals and challenges, we kind of seem to be just copying things from one year to the next year. And I guess I'd like to see, you know, go over those and say, okay, what, you know, what has been done, yeah, within the last year and what are you looking for next year as far as developing supply contracts? How many more have we added? What other areas are we looking at? What policies and procedures, I mean?
To answer some of those questions, we, we basically got rid of our general administrative warehouse supplies, so during this past year, and I have to go back to see how many contracts, but we just recently did a safety contract for all the type of gloves, goggles, safety helmets and those type of things. So we, during this past year, we, we developed three or four, I know, contracts to help the departments rather than come by the warehouse and actually pick up those materials, rather than have to source it themselves, we create contracts so that they can at least call someone, here's the part I need or whatever the safety item is. So those are, we do those, I mean, that's our general business all the time, looking for opportunities. This year in particular though, it was important for the departments because they've been reduced in staff and, and then we've put a burden on them that they normally just stop by the warehouse and grab something, now they have to order it themselves. So those are the type of things that we have done in particular this year and, and what we continue to do, piggyback contracts. We've, we've done some with Indian River County, we did on debris removal, we piggybacked the contract for fiber optic cables. City West Palm Beach with Stewart Motors for motor rebuild, City of Melbourne for chemicals, City of Sunrise for safety products. So those are some of the things we've done the last year. And we, we also, each year we, we track the department's small dollar purchases and then we, we look for trends and that, you do that constantly and it identifies areas in which we can get, you know, obtain more contracts and try to reduce the amount of, you know, repetitive paperwork that's time-consuming for small dollar purchases. We're just trying to make that an efficient process for them.
The other thing that, that we did this year, organization-wide, that John worked with the finance department on was change our internal purchasing policies and procedures to, again, eliminate what we consider to be some unnecessary paperwork at very low dollar thresholds and, and kind of focus our attention on the ones that mattered and, and then in doing so to really dial in on compliance with those thresholds to make sure that quotes were there or they were state contract purchases and that the proper paperwork and approvals were done before the purchases. So we, we've actually made a fair amount of changes in the last year. I would say too, you know, some of the changes have been made in response to, again, another department that's, that's taken a, you know, a number of personnel cuts to, to again, make things more efficient and to focus our efforts where it makes a difference, where we can save money and where it's important and to streamline and eliminate all that, you know, a requisition for $500 item kind of thing. So, you know, it's been, it's been a challenge and I think it's gone pretty well. We've also had a number, in my opinion, of unusual RFPs and things that we've actually never done procurements for, like the defined contribution plan, which was a complete RFP process. And so they've had to stretch a little over there to find a...
And time-consuming ones as well, the...
Committee-driven ones.
Committee-driven ones are defined benefits, even software ones. We had four full days of software demonstration and those are, those are big time consumers and we, when we get into, as the city's looked at how to do things differently, it generates RFPs that are very intensive and demanding on the time, on the departments as well, evaluating, looking at all the options and then getting your committee members and again, that calls on Tammy's staff on, thank you Tammy for all your staff helping taking the minutes and coordinating these meetings that are, that we conduct publicly.
Still, I guess like for the future, I'd like to see, you know, on the goals and challenges, try to be a little bit more specific and not, like I said, that we start copying things from one year to the other and say, hey, these are some specific areas we know we can work on to improve.
Well noted.
The other, the other item that we're very sensitive to as well is to make sure that we have security in place, that we have processes and that can follow up and if errors are made that we have a way of identifying those and doing corrective action. So John's very good at sort of monitoring even those that he doesn't necessarily have his direct fingerprints on, but issues that may come about. Because we deal with so many different types of purchasing, you go from the water and sewer to the airport as an example with all their grants and how you use those federal dollars and the way the bidding processes go. So we're, we're very sensitive that we have exposure. The more we dial down and give flexibility to the department directors, it just gives you an area that you just have to keep an eye on and John's very good at watching for that.
Any other questions on purchasing?
Nope.
Okay. And next part is our warehouse operations.
Yeah. John, you might want to talk about the person and what we're doing next.
Sure. Yep. As you heard, the city manager gave a overview in the beginning where the, we wanted to add a additional person in our warehouse. Currently, we're staffed at three and one of those positions is our mail delivery attendant, so they don't really contribute to the operations inside the warehouse, that's an external function of the warehouse. But when we made the cuts that we did the previous year, in order for us to continue our operations, we actually had to limit our hours of operations. So staff in the warehouse, the two personnel that are there actually have time to do all the paperwork that's generated through the delivery and issuing of materials and also accepting deliveries from external, you know, just our commercial operators. So what we did is limited city time and the biggest impact was on the TND operations. They were essentially about two and a half hours out of the entire day available for them. So while we're trying to make our adjustments, it, it pushes out and affects the other departments and in fairness to them, it just was not efficient. They have seven crews each morning that show up and so we work in spurts and they need to get out the door, you have probably 20 people in those seven crews, I'm guessing, and to have one or two people available to issue that, it can take up to 30 to 45 minutes or longer to get people out the door. And at the same time, that doesn't stop a commercial truck from coming in and dropping stuff off. Now, our goal obviously is to get city staff out there, but you're also holding up a commercial truck driver. So we limited our hours in an effort to think that we could get all our paperwork done, do inventory, clean up the lot from all the materials and it's been a struggle all year, to be honest with you. And we can't control, even the hours we set aside for us to do paperwork, there's still deliveries that come in and without the additional per, person, I think it's, to put it in more layman terms, it'd be like a general contractor working on a house and telling him he can't go to Home Depot and pick up a couple extra sheets of drywall, you know, to continue and go work on something else till you can come by after lunch and so I, I think that's the, the best way to describe our, our need and, and the causes, you know, of being short personnel back there.
All-in cost for this additional individual?
Thirty-four thousand, I think was our...
Salary, benefit, pension, everything?
I didn't do benefit, that's hourly.
Loaded rate.
Loaded rate.
What's happening is that the benefits are now running 60% of the salary cost as we're trying to catch up with our unfunded pension. So I caution all council members to be very cautious when they say, oh, well, it's 10 grand, no, that's 16,000 and in this case it would be...
Here, I think we have, Cindy, describe that.
Keeping in mind though, that regardless of the salary level, the contribution to the unfunded liability would remain the same. So, so it's really, the, the incremental cost, if you will, is 7.65% FICO Medicare and a 7% contribution for pension. No matter how many people we had, we'd still owe exactly the same amount of money for the unfunded liability, so. But all-in, 30, 50?
Yeah, 50.
Fifty, yeah.
But again, keeping in mind that because this was directly at the request of the electric utility, I added this to the general administrative allocation to be 100% charged to the electric utility because they're the driver for this and Tom Richards was, you know, accepted that.
Accepted with that?
Yes. So this doesn't really impact the general fund, it's, but because they work for the warehouse, they need to be here and then be at, the costs need to be allocated to the electric utility.
No, and I agree, it certainly doesn't make sense if we're having, yeah, crews being held up and not, you know.
No.
You have seven, yeah.
Even internally for ourselves, our operations, you know, but the crews are very important to the operation.
Something to really note over this exercise, just to let you know, to sort of an insight into the organization, I think it's very good that the department directors were able to come together and put the plan together because it, historically, we used to sort of fight over those type of things of who's going to pay for what. But I, I think with TND and the electric department, working with John, they worked out a plan that I think is very affordable to, to the organization.
Yeah, even how we're set up now, we, we did a lot of talking, discussing, you know, recognizing their issues, yeah. So, I'll owe them big.
I, I see the operational salaries going up in the general fund warehouse. You're saying that the electric does reimburse, where's the, the account that that comes through the reimbursement?
Where do you see that?
That's in the revenue under general and administrative expenses and that's kind of across all these departments. What we, what we do is each department, there's an allocation of their costs out to electric, water, sewer, et cetera, that is revenue to the general fund. So the, the allocation of these costs was increased, this particular person was 100% allocated to the electric utility. So it's in the general and administrative expense in the electric utility and it's in the revenue side in the general fund. The line item is, I'm going to go backward to page, page five, about halfway down the page in administrative charges.
I see the mechanism, I'm just thinking that, you know, from the public's point of view, it still looks like revenue that comes into the general fund instead of an expense. I would rather it be seen as an expense from utility instead of just a generic revenue coming into the general fund.
There's of course, going to expense on the, on the electric utility side and non-departmental.
So there's a description of the 34,000 in the electric side?
No, it's the whole, they pay a whole chunk of expense for their, for our administrative, centralized administrative services.
Departmentalized, okay.
I guess Jim, for you, I have a question on, on page 36, under general fund warehouse. Under vehicle maintenance, I see a 44% increase and it's reoccurring on public works, it's a 109% increase. On page 57, vehicle maintenance for the groundwork is four, is 52%. What, what happened?
We, we are now allocating and changing the format by which we're operating at the maintenance facility and charging to the various departments the true cost. When Monty comes up, that'll be another one of his that he can address with you, how that it's affecting all the departments, but that maintenance is being sent out and what we're trying to do is upgrade and update our vehicles and really give a more accountable charging of those accounts coming out of vehicle maintenance.
And if you look at the bottom line to the general fund, it's not a net increase because if you look at the fleet management budget, which we will when Monty gets up here, that has gone down to almost nothing. And so essentially what Monty and Don identified is that fleet doesn't exist for any other reason except to service other departments, so they modified their allocation method. It increased the cost to the other general fund departments, but it took fleet management down to almost nothing.
So they're bearing the cost per department instead of at fleet?
Allocate it out to the real, to the real people that are there to serve. Last year they ended up with a residual budget of amount of several hundred thousand dollars and they looked at it and said, well, wait, we, we don't exist for any other reason except to service the other departments and so they, they modified their allocation.
Got you.
It really does reflect where the costs are.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Public Works, Engineering and Survey. Is Monty in the room yet?
Yes.
He's slithered in a few minutes ago.
Jim, a, a question, where are we going to do the capital? There's a lot of capital in...
Yes, that was my question too.
I have a lot of capital questions on Public Works.
I was thinking last year, what we did was we did the capital, at least the general capital in conjunction with the departments that had those expenses. So primarily it's Monty and then the police department, which we'll talk about tomorrow morning, and then recreation expenses. So I would say this would be a good place to do Monty's departments and then do the capital.
Good morning.
And I mean, I'd be ready for that one, not having had an agenda, have, you know, not sure everybody to discuss the capital projects yet, but if everyone else is, then...
We can make Monty come back too, that, that works.
Well, this year, let me just make a quick statement. I didn't bring any charts or graphs to bore you with. This year, our budget's pretty much the same as it's been in the past, no increase in staff. As you guys know, we've worked real hard in Public Works as we have citywide, we've reduced staffing 34% since 2009. I was listening when you asked a question about the city hall air conditioners.
Yeah.
There's a $6,000 maintenance item. That, that has averaged 5,500 bucks for the last five years with a high of 7,500 and a low of 3,000. As you know, this building is, is kind of unique. If you walk around, there's a lot of different buildings that have been cobbled together. So it's, it's really inefficient to try to air condition it. There are 16 AC units here. So if you look at that 6,000 divided by 16, it's $375 a unit for annual maintenance. If there's a big replacement of a commercial unit, you'll see that show up as a capital item. If there's a small, one of the smaller units, we, we do that replacement out there. But that's mostly fan belts, fan motors, filters and...
Regular maintenance, yeah.
But $6,000 over 16 units is not as, not as big as it would seem as if it were $6,000 for our units at home, which would make us panic.
Monty, one of the things they ask us to do is look into a potential energy audit at city halls.
I made a note of that and that's, that's a great idea. We've done some of those things, as you know, we've, we've got the programmable thermostats and when we do lighting replacements, we try to upgrade to more efficient equipment. But again, it's a, it's a building that has its history that goes back to the early 60s when it started as the, as the police department and the jail in the west wing, excuse me, the east wing and then when this was added with the, with the other, when utilities was over here with our drive-through that is now in the state representative's office. We could put that back in, they could have great service and customers could just drive up and talk to them and leave, but, but, but we will, we will take a look and see if there's some things we could do to...
Yeah, I know it'd be a challenge, but I was going to say if we identify anything that...
Yeah, and, and a great idea.
I see on page 38, under vehicle maintenance, you dropped 60%. Is that from allocating it out to what we were just talking about a few minutes ago?
Yeah. What passed, we had, we had done a full cost allocation to the enterprise funds, but we had kept the general fund maintenance into the garage's budget. When you get to the garage or, or fleets, you'll see that their budget is now...
About $2,000.
About $2,000, which is really an overtime expense that we just, you know, we don't know how to allocate that because it may or may not occur, but it has gone from the 260,000 last year down to 2,000 and those costs have been pushed out to the user departments in the general fund as we had done in the enterprise fund in the past.
Great, okay, I understand.
And I think that's a very appropriate...
Yes. And like I said, as we started developing our budget, Don and Cindy and I, we, we felt like that was the best way to get a, a full picture of where the costs were.
And let your users control the costs. When they start barking and say, hey, this is enough, then they're putting pressure back on, yeah.
We're, we're sort of jumping around a little bit, do we want to go down?
Public Works and Engineering.
Engineering, surveying.
I have nothing.
If I have any questions?
I do. Back on major goals and challenges, continued implementation of the stormwater, BMP projects is required. This is, you know, obviously having to do with reducing our nitrogen and phosphorus loads in the lagoon on the Phase 2. I mean, I think we've done, we're way ahead of the game having quantified these issues and, but we still have some reductions we need to make and I think we need to lay out a plan to say, hey, how can we get the...
Yeah, and, and to supplement that, Monty, before you answer it, and I totally agree, when you get into the capital appropriation, you've only got $50,000 budget and which is down significantly. And if I remember, we were down to like 14-inch outfalls or something, but we had 14-inch and below were still outfalling. I was going to get to it in capital, but I don't think $50,000 is enough, you'd have to prove to me that it is.
Yeah, I, I can address that. We had, we had intended to reduce that down to 150,000 this year and we had a failure of an outfall on 27th Avenue where it discharges into the main canal. If you remember, about 10 years ago, the DOT rebuilt 27th Avenue and they have a 60-inch, 54 or 60-inch outfall and it has a head wall that is on the south bank of the main canal, flows from the canal, got behind the head wall and pulled the head wall off, caused a failure in a couple of sections of pipe. So we shifted $100,000 of that stormwater outfall, in the general stormwater outfall to a specific project that you'll see as 27th Avenue Outfall Repair.
Okay.
And we will repair that.
Which obviously is critical.
Well, that explains the 100,000, but it's still, you know, you've done a good job here before explaining to city council how many outfalls we've done, how many we have left to do. It may be that the $100,000 is something we have to pay, but it may be that the $50,000 is still not enough. In other words, that we need more outfall work to continue, that's what I'm saying.
And we also have the Bureau Isles project.
Yes, and that, that is, that's one that we shifted back from, from last year, but I'd be glad to talk about any of them. I, I do agree, we, we couldn't spend enough money to do what needs to be done in... I do agree, we couldn't spend enough money to do what needs to be done in the short term.
No, but we have to prioritize, you know, and I think you're hitting the right direction, Monty, doing the big one at 27th, getting the Bureau Isles, and then, you know, working our way down.
As we get to those, we'll talk about, we have some real limitations on our capital fundable for that type of work, and we're severely constrained. So, we're trying to give the most money we can at those, and-
Well, you say we're severely restrained. Why are we restrained?
Yeah, simple. Unless you get a raise tax, this is the money you gotta work with.
The lagoon is important, and, you know, as I said before, you have done a good job in the past of showing us how many outfalls have been done, the bigger ones have been done. I understand everything you said here up to this point, but you also have given us, showed us the number of outfalls yet to do. And look, I mean, if we have to put another $100,000 into the outfalls, if that's in the interest of the lagoon, that's a responsible thing for government to do, not to say we don't have the money. I don't buy that.
And I'd intended to bring you an update to the capitals. I don't have it ready for you today of where we are with those and how many are left. But as you know, when we talked about it, we focused on the larger diameters first, that's where the major impact is, and we've gotten down to the smaller ones.
Good.
Well, can we have it by Friday?
Sure.
Can we have some sort of, in other words, we're sub-roses are not talking about it. But if the outfalls, if we're not doing a good enough job, and you can bring us forward the information and tell us whether we are or not, but I would submit to you, if we're not doing a good enough job, we have to then move forward, even if that would change the tax rate. I believe it was the most important thing.
Doing a good enough job is what? Zero out?
I want him to bring forth.
No, I mean, that's a subjective thing. I think you need to give him some kind of standard that say, "Okay, I think we are, you know, we've got a program, we're doing it within our means, you know, and hitting the high points." You know, if you wanted, you want absolutely zero outfall, you know, and have every single one covered, then that's-
I'm asking for him to bring forth, or before we conclude this session, an overview of where we are, so we can have the information you just asked for. I don't have the information sitting here, and I'm concerned with the lagoon, so be as it may.
One of the other things, there are stormwater utilities that can be established if that's what you want to do to address specific issues. And so, that's a school of thought as well.
All I see is, okay, I understand we had to move $100,000 from the long-term program. You had a long-term program that we approved last year, which is roughly 150,000. I'll pull the book out from last year, if you like. And that program made sense to me as a reasonable and prudent thing to do in the interest that the city could afford to do in the interest of the lagoon. Now, we're saying that we have taken a step backwards because of a calamity happened that we can't help, and I'm just not necessarily accepting that without further information. That's all.
Yeah, but the funds are still going to an outfall to protect the lagoon.
And the lagoon is still dying, Mrs. Turner.
I realize that.
All right, still in Engineering and Survey. Any other questions? Okay, Street Stormwater and Traffic.
I have some, only one in this. You've explained them in the maintenance, and this is nickels and dimes, but you've gone from the budget on signs from 50 to 70, the running rate's 40. I'm sure you have a good explanation. I'll accept any good explanation.
We have a project that we're gonna do this year. We'll be doing all the restriping of the Royal Palm Point, Royal Palm Boulevard corridor between US 1 and Interneur Boulevard. The cost on that is somewhere between 15 and 18,000 for the materials that we'll be using to do that, and that's the bulk of the increase of the 20,000. One of the things that we're also gonna be faced with over the next few years, it's 2014, it's 10 years after 2004. We all know in 2004, we had our friends Francis and Jean that blew down all of our signs. We replaced those. So, effectively, in 2004, we had all new signs in the city. After 10 years, they start to lose their reflectivity, and we're starting to replace some of those. So, you'll see a little bit of increase in that because of that, and we'll be doing that over the next few years to keep those signs so that they're visible at nighttime. But those two items is what would account for that $20,000 increase.
If, do we want to deal with the capital items?
Sure.
Could I go back to, sorry, before you get into capital, major goals and challenges? This is replacing the thermoplastic pavement markings. This is what you were talking about with the sign things.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The thermoplastic is what we'll be using at Royal Palm Boulevard in place. It comes in blocks. You heat it up to melt it and apply it with our paint applicator.
Thank you.
All right, and when you go to street resurfacing, we have $200,000 out there. Royal Palm, I'm sorry, Ocean Boulevard alone needs resurfacing. There's a lot of streets around this town that need resurfacing. I was involved in resurfacing our little gated community. $200,000 on the streets of this town, to me, is not enough money to take care of the streets. I think we're letting our infrastructure at $200,000. Primiposa, someone has to prove to me we're not letting them go downhill, because I think we are.
Ocean Drive is scheduled to be resurfaced next fiscal year, and so, we're working with the Oceanside Business Association to try to hit it at a time where the business is still operating, and some of the retailers close for periods of time, and so, Monty has been working with the business association.
Yeah, we'll be bringing you a contract to counsel at your next Tuesday meeting. Don will be here doing that, as I'll be out with the railroad with my engineers hat on doing the inspection with the railroad that day. But we are bringing that contract.
Still old shoes.
Still good shoes, yeah. Bringing that contract for Ward to do Ocean Drive between Gay Feather and Gray Swig, then Beachland Boulevard from A1A to Ocean Drive, and then 14th Avenue from 18th Street to St. Lucie Avenue.
Basically up to the bridge by the county administration.
Right. And that's the contract we have. But to answer your question, $200,000 is not enough. We are, again, those funds that we use for capital projects come from one cent sales tax, gas tax, and they are capital funds. They're not funds that are generally from ad valorem sources. To get us on a 20-year replacement cycle for our asphalt streets, we would need about 600 grand a year. To get on a 15-year cycle, which a lot of places try to get, it would be about $800,000 a year. We are taking care of the worst roadways until our funding condition looks better. It's gonna be sometime, there's some things we have to deal with in that because of debt service for some, from city properties, that is gonna be with us for quite some time.
That's the golf course, that $10 million purchase, Dodger Town Golf Course. We have been paying interest on that, and now we're gonna be paying principal, and that's gonna take a big chunk.
It's about $600,000 a year that stays with us till-
20, 25, 26.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna let the roads deteriorate to 2025. Is that what I'm hearing?
But we get an overgrown golf course.
We need a better foot.
Less you find reductions, yeah, and other places in the city budget.
Well, no, that's not necessarily true. And I'm fairly conservative, but I would tell you, maybe we can't do 600, but maybe we should be doing 400, and maybe we should find the 200,000, even if we have to find it in additional revenue. I do not, look, I've been involved in a lot of factories in my life. I've been involved in a lot of financial managers, deferred maintenance, you always pay for them or later on. And I am not happy with putting $200,000 into streets when we know we should be putting 600. At least, let's find a way to make a step forward. And look, if we have to raise $200,000 more revenue to do it, $200,000 is, you know, as a percentage of $4 million ad valorem tax is only 5%. I won't shy from that. The people of this town expect good streets, and not just on the island, but in the city itself. So, I mean, thank you for being honest. Thank you for coming forth, but I'm not happy with the street situation. I will rest my case.
Perhaps we need to talk to the county about releasing those restrictions and getting out from underneath that debt. I mean, that's a big chunk of property. Property values are coming back. I would love to put that money back into Public Works and get our streets up and running again.
You probably never get $10 million, but you could reduce the debt service if we could put in a question.
Quite significantly. My question is, would the county play ball with us and let us have the freedom to work with that property?
We can make that request.
With the idea that the savings would go into streets.
Well, the whole, that's the whole purpose. That payment comes from the street's budget, goes right into that fund. If we could at least reduce that, then the remaining money could go back into streets.
Right. If you look at, this probably helps, if you look at page 47 of this capital book, I think this'll put it in context, turn that sideways. Essentially, this is, at the top, the money we get from one cent sales tax, and that money goes to two places, debt service, and whatever we have left over goes into the general construction fund. And so, if you look, those top two lines are the two pieces of Dodger Town debt service. And you notice that when the one goes away in 1617, the other one that has been interest only to this point in time now goes to principal and interest. That was by design so that we would essentially have a level debt service payment for the 10 million all the way out to 2025. So, that's really the crux of it. In 1617, when that first one goes away, the first $5 million is gone, so what we're left with is five. So, certainly, if we were allowed to sell that property, we might go a long way toward taking care of that.
Well, I'd like to have some sort of an action plan. I don't know what it is, but-
We can, yeah, ask the city manager to investigate, yeah, what possibilities we may have of that property.
We can make the request to the county and see if they would waive those parameters.
Thank you.
You know, I would submit to you that we should put $2,000 more in the budget, more in the ad valorem tax, and in September, we can remove it, but at least we should not just roll 204 forward, and that'll give you between now and September to come up with some alternate plan. But to let the streets go for another year, I don't buy it. I'm sorry.
We can propose that change in the ad valorem. You still have plenty of time for that, and it would still just take a majority vote.
And the right solution is the one, Mrs. Turner, is projected, and you're projecting. In other words, let's get out from underneath the darn golf course.
We can try, okay.
Let's do whatever it takes to do that.
Plan of action, that would be our step.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, I'm not trying to impose cost on the public, but I am.
Yes, you are.
Yes, I am. Okay, I am. But what I am, what I'm saying is, we have to keep the streets up.
We do. So, are we agreeing to have a proposed increase?
We can talk about that Friday.
I'm agreeing to explore the option so that we don't have to have the increase.
Yes, I agree with that also.
Okay. From that, I'm taking that you would like to see us make a request to the county.
Yes.
We'll do that. I'll work with the city attorney on how to draft that piece of correspondence.
GIS, I don't have any questions.
Just for public information, GIS is really a supportive service to virtually every department in the city, and very vital to the foundation of what we do.
I see a 40% increase in part times.
Yeah, that's our intern program. And if you look at GIS, as you go back, you'll look on down to the bottom, the inter-fund service, and that's what Jim is speaking to. We bill for the work that we do for basically Water and Sewer. We've been in discussions with Ted Fletcher to start picking up some of their work as their GIS function is shifting around, and he can address that a little more. He doesn't know exactly how he's gonna do it, so that could change based on some factors that are out of our control but under his, but we're available to offer that service to him. But we have some interns that we get that help us come in with data entry, and those things help Water and Sewer, and hopefully, we'll be helping Electric with their asset management tracking as we keep up with their stuff as they put it in the field. We have it for them to be able to access in that manner.
Moving on to Grounds Maintenance.
We're happy with our mowing contract and that seam.
It, they're a lot better. As we all know, we struggled with them because Jim and I started them a little early last year to take advantage of the savings, and their learning curve was in the height of the growing season. It seems to have stabilized, and we're not getting the same issues that we had when we first implemented the contract. But yes, they've been able to meet the expectations that we set out in the contract.
How much longer does that contract have? I think it's a three-year contract.
Yeah.
This'll be the second year, though, right?
That's correct. Yeah.
Because we changed contractors.
We did.
And just, but applied the same contract.
Correct.
This is one of those-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to make one more comment.
We have the same mowing contract. It was a beach cleaning contractor that we changed. Yes, sir.
This is a line item under Grounds Maintenance, Park Maintenance Income, that we use to allocate a portion of it out to the Recreation Enterprise Fund. Just in the interest of accurate full-cost accounting, as we did with Fleet Management, even though we rolled Recreation into the general fund, I left the allocation of those maintenance activities associated with the parks, as we decided a couple of years ago, in the Recreation Department within the general fund, so it's still allocated to them.
Any other questions on Grounds?
Moving on to Administration.
Again, I'm still wondering how we can, yeah, our administration costs, we have, what, almost a million dollars of administration cost for Public Works? Half a million, yeah, half a million dollars for supervision of 71 employees, more or less?
96.
And a portion of that is allocated out to solid waste?
Yes.
As well. That includes the management of the Solid Waste Department.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Administration?
Since, again, are we putting a focus on, yeah, any other, further efficiencies or how we can be doing better, looking at our structure, cross-training in our areas?
Yeah. We are, and we have taken, most of our folks have multiple capabilities. John didn't bring it up, but at the warehouse, we have had some of our equipment operators in the Streets Division go be trained and certified on the forklifts. So, if he has a day where he has somebody out that he, you know, doesn't have somebody, he picks the phone up and calls Steve Fuller, and we can make a person available that can, you know, help with that delivery that may come in. So, we're working with all the departments as we have reduced staff across the board to, you know, to find where we can help each other, and we'll continue to do that.
I think the other thing to keep in mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, Monty, but this department is also essentially in charge of the administration of all the capital projects that are in 304, right?
That's correct.
Moving on from Administration, Fleet Management, this is the one that we've changed the allocation and how we charge off the respective cost.
I think it's a positive change to get it where it needs to go.
Yeah, it's its home, it's a natural home there. Monty, I see you got a 375% increase in contract painting. What are we painting for $30,000?
I agree with you.
That's in facilities.
Okay.
You stepped ahead.
I skipped ahead, I'm sorry.
Back on Fleet Maintenance, once again, just look at it personnel, that we have eight people in Fleet Maintenance that, you know, I appreciate the count of equipment and cars, but-
We have, we have an aged fleet, about 15, 16 years for the average vehicle is the age of them. As we all know, when you keep those vehicles, they are maintenance-intensive. What we are rolling out this year is a new program that we're rolling out citywide, and we've worked with Cindy and at Jim's direction, to try to reduce the age of the fleet. And we're starting with a lease-purchase program where we will hopefully, over the next five or six- next five or six years, change the age of the fleet from 15 or 16 years to five years. What that does is it takes the maintenance needs, and the major maintenance should go away on the light vehicles. If you keep a vehicle five years, as we experience in our personal vehicles, you don't have typically a major maintenance issue. It's preventative maintenance. So we're hoping as this happens and we see our maintenance decline over that five-year period, we may be able to look at that staffing as we move through, but it's going to take five years to get those vehicles completely pushed out and the new ones in. And then that would be something that we would stay on, a five-year replacement cycle of the vehicles, unless we found a vehicle that, since it's a lease purchase, we do own them, we don't have to turn them back in. So if a department director wants to keep a vehicle, we can still do that. They still have the flexibility. But for the higher-used vehicles, we would be able to keep that age of the fleet at five years instead of 15.
No, we had looked at possibly doing maintenance, yeah, on a contract basis outside of the city.
We looked at that, and what that maintenance was going to do was oil changes, and we looked at...
That's all it was.
And we looked at the amount of time, and it didn't come up to but about a third of a man year for the actual time involved in those. So it didn't warrant taking a person out of fleet, so we're going to continue to do that work in and monitor the maintenance needs of these vehicles as we bring them in and adjust to the staffing level as we see we may be able to as the fleet gets newer. Again, this is the light vehicles, one ton and less, that we'll be doing with this. The heavy vehicles, we're not doing this. It's still the, you know, the bucket trucks and garbage trucks, and those things will still be maintained by our shop, except for the high bucket trucks that T&amp;D uses. We don't have the hydro...
And I just think it's important, yeah, that we keep, once again, looking at the efficiencies, letting the public know that, yes, we have explored this other option and, you know, didn't pay out for it. Sometimes they don't.
And we did extensive research on that. As a matter of fact, had several presentations made. And one of the real challenges is that they sort of specialize in certain vehicles and not in the fleet that we...
As broad as we needed. Thank you.
Any other fleet questions? Okay. Mr. Fletcher, your question about the contract painting. What we've... What we'll be doing there at the Public Works compound, that's 91 when we moved in there. It's the back buildings that we use to house all the equipment and service departments. We're going to be on a two- or three-year program to clean, take the rust off, and paint, and we're going to... We program in about... It's about $100,000, the estimate that we got to do that, so we'll do it over a three-year cycle. Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll see that next year.
You'll see another similar increase, and we'll do as much of the work we can in house, getting it prepped and getting it ready, but then there'll be a contract painter that actually will do that work.
Thank you.
Okay, we have non-departmental then.
Not quite finished on facilities. I have one more question.
Okay.
Once again, maintaining the city parking lot, the lighting in the parking lots and the parks and exterior lighting in the building. Once again, are we looking at lower-cost options for lighting there instead of just grabbing the same old bulb or looking at what we can do?
Yeah, as we replace them, and we're trying to go to the most efficient that we can. If it's a major, we're starting to look at some of the LEDs, and... But again, that's a capital expense upfront. As we replace what we do, we're trying to use the most economical replacement at the time.
That you can.
Yeah.
But still, something I think for the future to be looking at, for our street lighting in general, you know, that a proposal to go to a more efficient LED system, because our electric costs aren't going down. As much as we'd like, they're just not going to go down.
And facilities doesn't take care of the street lighting. That's done for us by T&amp;D, so that's an issue that we'll...
But maybe something jointly to look at, like I said, for a future capital project.
Okay, we have two action items then. One, the one on the golf course, this of this street that you suggested, by which you suggested. And the second one is you're going to come back Friday with a little better overview of the outfalls and the effect on the lagoon.
Yes, sir. Or we can do that when we do the capital stuff. I think it's on... Is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Monty, I have a quick question going back to fleet. As we lease vehicles in, are we setting any kind of parameters on fuel efficiency or trying to use hybrid vehicles that would bring down our fuel costs as well?
Well, one of the things that when we looked at the fleet, the fuel efficiency in just the newer vehicles is going to save us some, but we'll try to get the right vehicle with the right use. We haven't looked at hybrids because of the heavy-duty use that most of these get. But, um, yes, we're trying to look at that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to non-departmental, and I was going to suggest we do that, take a break, and then do the revenue if that's agreeable.
Sure.
And that really is what we have for today, I believe. We might be able to finish before lunch.
That's great.
Do you need us to stick around for those, because there's five or six of them to our...
Yeah, it might be a good idea.
Okay.
Monty, under 79, non-departmental, I see...
What page are we on?
79. I see a 550% increase on professional services. What are we doing there? From $3,000 to $19,500?
That's not us.
Repeat again, I didn't follow you. I'm sorry.
Under operating expenses, the first line item is professional services.
Yeah.
It goes from $3,000 to $19,500. I was wondering what that blip was.
I increased that somewhat because of the actuals for the last few years.
550% somewhat.
Well, but if you look at the actuals for 1213 and 1112, they've been running 30, 25, 30, and this line item includes, for instance, our actuary calculating retirement benefits, our actuary doing the annual calculation of the little piece of paper that goes out to everyone. So bottom line, I think this has been underbudgeted for about five years in a row, and it's never come out to be $16,000, so...
You spent $24,000 year-to-date.
Year-to-date, we spent $34,000 in 1213. So I essentially just adjusted this to something I think is a little more realistic and probably still maybe slightly low. That was just one of those ones where it hasn't been right for years, and it was time to acknowledge that it wasn't ever going to be as low as $16,000 or $3,000. $3,000, never going to happen, so...
Rob, I'm here, just want to take an opportunity to thank Milligan's and our sponsors for the Fourth of July and...
Great, too.
Our recreation staff, everybody who worked so hard to make that, I mean, in inclement weather and difficult circumstances, to make that a success. Thank you.
Rob did an unbelievably good job of keeping that thing sort of organized. Hope we haven't had to, you know, send him off to the hospital yet, but he was pretty excited on Saturday. But I will say that once the fireworks were shot, he was a little relieved.
I have one other question. It's nickels and dimes, so any answer is a good answer, but code enforcement abatement and non-departmental, it's $10,000, and any good explanation is a good one.
We have buried the cost of code enforcement abatements, like going out and mowing properties that are unmoed, into the departments that do them, and so what we decided to do was to segregate them here, and then you can compare them to your revenue. And then that way, you can compare them to your revenue from code enforcement fines.
I think it's a great idea to have that clear or transparent. Thank you very much.
That way, if this comes out to be 30, actually, but then your code enforcement revenue should be...
Where there are fines, yeah, or balancing it, yeah.
Fines, where fines went up to $75,000 that was collected as opposed to $8,000, which is a damn good job.
For two people.
Yeah, for two people.
Okay, is it time for a break, or what is the general?
Let me just give another little short comment on that. We are being more aggressive at addressing the code enforcement. One of the challenges that we've had historically is being able to afford to send somebody out to do the grass mowing and when we get concerns from neighbors, but we're trying to address those up front. Now, what that does is puts in a built-in cost. We put a lien against the property, and it may be two years or three years down the road before we can collect those, but I think it's important that we address the issues as we can, and so Tim McGary and his department's doing a very good job in that.
Code enforcement is a major, major portion of keeping the city the way it looks.
But how you handle the customers also is almost as important.
Yeah, I agree.
One more quick comment, if I could, before we take a break. The reason that the general insurance has gone up substantially, that's a direct impact of bringing the recreation department into the general fund, because it's allocated costs based on the amount of property, number of employees. They used to be paid for out there when it was in an enterprise fund, and when we pulled it into the general fund, we stuck it into the general insurance line item, so we don't have a huge increase in insurance cost this year, so...
Okay, what time do you want to come back?
10 minutes?
10:50?
10:50. We'll come back at 10:50. Thanks, Jay.
Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning, right.